Aye.
Post? Good. Let's move on then to the... We have a new public hearing. I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay. Tenbrock, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. New pictures, okay. Okay, I looked at it today, too. The sun wasn't shining today. All right.
You are, sir?
My name is Alec Glad from the law firm of Cuddy and Fetter.
Okay, good.
And with me this evening is our paralegal and actually sister of the applicant, Sandy Way.
Aye, welcome.
Sharon couldn't be here tonight because she has RSB right now. She was on the edge of not being contagious anymore, but we thought it was better if she just stayed home, so we...
She's listening.
We told her not to come, but she's listening on the phone.
We hope she's doing better, and thank you for coming. Tell us about what we're looking at here.
Yep, absolutely. So, to start with, why are we here? So Sharon is the widow of George Tenbrock. They were married in 1994, and George unfortunately passed away in 2019. So she inherited their property, which George had owned since 1962. And in the process of trying to sell her home, because she can no longer physically take care of it, it was discovered that there was an outstanding building permit for a pool that was constructed sometime in the 1960s after George had purchased the property and moved in. So on August 30th, 2022, we received a zoning referral for 280A frontage, and we're asked to come here to get a variance for that. So that's how we arrived here. In the process of trying to sell her property, it was discovered that she needed a building permit for an existing pool. So just to start with the property setting, it's located at 50 White Street in the Statsburg hamlet. And if you have our application packets in front of you, Exhibit C has some aerials to look at. So White Street intersects with Old Post Road, and there are about six properties that use this right-of-way. And access to the Tenbrock property is guaranteed by an easement on a filed deed in the Dutchess County Clerk's office.
That's the owner who owns the 6.5 acres behind... Is that the one? It's not the house on the right as you enter?
No, it's the bigger parcel in the back.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, no, please, please do... Yeah, it's...
It's parcel 063324?
It's 038323...
No, it is the little one.
Are you talking about the applicant's?
I'm talking about the owner who is giving you...
Oh, yes, yes, yes. That is... Sorry, I misunderstood your question. Yes, that is the parcel that granted the easement.
Okay.
Yep. So we know that this easement has existed for the last 60 years, at least since 1962. But actually, the second document in the packet that I just handed out is another deed for one of the pieces of property that uses... That also uses White Street. And there's language in that deed saying that in sometime in the 1800s, the easement was granted over that property for the use of like oxen, cattle, horses and buggies and that sort of stuff. So use of White Street to access the different properties that use it has conceivably even gone back even farther than the 60 years.
Well, see, the person that was given that right, was that somebody... Is that... Was that a property here we see, or...
Yeah, so there's a black and white picture with it highlighted, so that's property 021343. And I just brought that as an illustrative example. The title report for other properties has the same language in the deeds, too.
Okay. Okay. So clearly you have a right-of-way... It needed a right-of-way.
Yeah, so the relief we're here for is 280A variance. And the purpose of 280A, as you know, is just to provide safe, adequate, and reliable access in case of an emergency. And we do think we meet that standard. For one, it's been used safely, adequately, and reliably for the last 60 years. Under New York State Town Law Section 280A, what the statute says is the presumptive frontage for safe and adequate access is 15 feet. That's right in the 280A statute. And here, we actually have 25 feet of frontage for all of White Street. The access is straight, relatively flat, and it's maintained by the owners. And I think...
Which owners are maintaining that road?
They all do collectively.
Okay, some have fallen down, I think. I've driven... I drove it today.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the last time, it was a couple of years ago, they, you know, they all pitched in and fixed it up.
They need to have another meeting.
Yeah.
It needs work.
Yep. So also, as you know, the fire department visited the site.
That was at our request?
Yes, yes. And I had emailed them also, asking them to fulfill it after Kathleen emailed me asking that. And they wrote a letter, which I assume you've all seen. And what they confirmed, which I think is important for the purpose of the variance we're seeking, is that they can get their... And I was also able to speak with the Assistant Fire Chief, is that they can get their biggest rig up and down the street. They have done that before, they had to do it a couple of years ago. So anything smaller like an ambulance, of course, that would fit. And in my conversation with the Chief... Assistant Fire Chief, he referenced some damage in his letter. And actually, that was from hitting a rock at the corner of White Street and Old Post Road, so it had nothing to do with our client's property. And as you can see from the pictures we submitted to you, we did complete his request of trimming the trees back so that there wasn't any branches interfering with the truck.
The... Actually, I would take some exception to that. The property 021343, which has the second right, which you just described in 18... In the 1800s, the bushes on there extend out in the road into that...
Well, we can only cut what was on our property, so we acquiesce to that request from the fire department. So we trim back, as you can see in the picture there, the pine trees on our property that were hanging over the road.
Yeah, and did she there?
Yeah, so again, just to summarize quick, the basis for the 280A variance is that safe, adequate, reliable access. It's been there for 60 years. We meet the state presumptive standard of 15 feet. We have 25. The fire department has, in real life, gotten a truck up and down the street, so if they ever need to again, they can. And we did do what we could as far as our property and trimmed back the branches that they asked us. And then just to touch on the 267 balancing test, too, because that's also something that needs to be taken into consideration. The standard there, as you well know, is the benefit to the applicant versus the detriment and harm to the neighborhood or the community. That's the overall balancing test, and you use the five factors as a tool to analyze that. So for that big picture balancing test, really, all we're... The benefit we're seeking is so that we can get a building permit for a pool that was constructed in the 1960s, so our client can sell the home that she can no longer physically take care of. And the detriment to the community is none, because there's no changes proposed to the property. All we're trying to do is get the town to recognize, you know, the 60 years of access that have existed to date. So just to run through some of the five factors quick, we don't think there can be an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood, because there's no change to the property. And the pool that is the subject of the building permit has been there since the 1960s. We really don't have any alternative than to seek the variance. We got the referral from the zoning department, and there's no other means of accessing this property. There's no adverse effects on the environment and no changes, and this request is a type-two action, which the DEC says has no impact as type-two. And we really don't think this is a self-created hardship. Her late husband, who she did not marry until 30 years after the pool was constructed, was the one who built it. She reasonably thought he had all permits, I think, as anyone would. So it was unknown to her that this condition was existing when she assumed ownership of the property.
Questions? Jim?
I have a couple. Is there any place that it mentions the length of White Street? In other words, does it go all the way over to Hughes Avenue?
It does not.
I see the same kind of thing over there.
Yeah, there's... So Hughes Avenue does have access, but the gravel path doesn't go all the way through that property.
There, I have heard historically there are people that have walked that path to go to some of the houses on Milford. I mean, is that a normal... I'm sure in terms of the town, they walk in that back. The only accesses you've been able to document are the two by your client and the other client in terms of a formal access, in terms of deeds.
Every... No, we looked at every property around there, and they all have the same...
Right-of-way.
Right-of-way easement to use it. Yeah, and there's a color aerial in Exhibit C, which shows the end of the road, which goes about to, you know, where that pool is.
Let's see that one. Let's see. Yeah. But to turn around... To turn around there, I turn into the driveway of the house, the other house that is down there.
Yep.
So the turnaround really is... Again, it's not... I don't think it's... May not be pertinent to what we're talking about here. It seemed like the group ought to get together and figure out that.
Okay.
Did you get back to the fire department and ask them to come up and look, or...
Yeah, they... He visited the site, the Assistant Fire Chief. He actually had a chance to meet with Sharon, because she was outside. That's when he asked her to trim back the trees on her property, which her son did this past weekend.
Oh, I was gonna... What I meant was, has he been back since then?
Since last week.
The trimming and...
Oh, no, I don't think he's gone back. But I did also share with him the photographs that I gave you guys.
Did we hear anything else from the fire department?
No. We did receive a letter indicating that they had... They had looked at the road. They did not feel that the road was measuring up to today's standards. Mentioned that turnaround was... Would be very difficult in there. Overgrowth in the trees, the bushes, but that's been taken care of. And that's about it. So from that, I would surmise the fire department can get their engine back there. It won't be pretty. And, you know...
Excuse me, David. I just wanted to mention that I did ask Mr. Streit if he would be able to attend tonight, and he was not able to attend because of work.
Okay, thank you. All right, anything else?
Does the town assume any liability on this road at all?
Counselor?
From my understanding, it's not on any maps, so it would be considered a private road. It should be accessible by the fire department. I think clearly that burden is met. I don't believe there would be liability, but I think that it's circumstantial. I mean, I don't want to speculate as to what circumstance could occur that could make the town liable. For our purposes, I don't see any issues.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, no, I... And just to second that, I don't believe there is any liability. I mean, under easement law, the dominant parcel has the responsibility to maintain their easement, so it's on all those six property owners to maintain it.
That's good information. I didn't know that.
Yes.
Okay.
I do want to comment, though, because we've talked about 280A.
Yep.
And Ted, correct me if I'm wrong. Is that still necessary here for this application?
Well, I think what we had talked about is that under 280A, it's not on a filed map. If the property is already developed, that presumes access. So you don't need a 280A, but the local law under 108.4 point... Something?
4E.
4.4E does require the frontage, so I don't believe we need the 280A, but we do need the 108.4.4E.
Okay, and that was my understanding, too, in our prior discussions of the application. Because 280A, the text clearly states it pertains to a permit for the erection of any building, which we aren't dealing with here. But I would concur with the zoning administrator about the frontage requirement. So it's really bringing it down to a zero frontage, because it's the private road, and that's what's linking you to access to the town road. And that would be necessary for the building permit.
And we can't consider the right-of-way frontage?
I don't believe it is considered frontage.
No.
Which I learned. Because I thought, I'm like, it's on a road, and it connects to another road. But if it's not on the map, I think is where it gets a little bit dicey.
It's not on the map, it's not on a filed map, it's not on an official town map.
It's confusing, because it's called a street.
Right.
Yeah.
And it makes it sound official, but it's not official.
But if it was their property, and it was still 25 feet, they would have 25-foot frontage? If it was theirs, if they had ownership?
Oh, yeah, then it would be a flag lot, and...
Okay. I'm getting the difference.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Comments? Any other people here who want to speak up? No? All right. I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion, closed.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We have a resolution here, and I would move this resolution to grant an area variance to Sharon Tenbrock and Justin O'Keefe, 50 White Street, Statsburg, Illinois. Resolution 22-21Z. Whereas the applicant Sharon Tenbrock and Justin O'Keefe have submitted an application for an area variance from Town Code Section 108-4.4E to approve the recognition of the existing 60-year-old access to the property and to change the required frontage on the public road from 25 feet to zero at 50 White Street, Statsburg, New York, 12580, identified as tax parcel 6167-03-038323 in the neighborhood district. And whereas the applicant authorized Alec R. Glad of Cuddy and Fetter to represent their interest in this matter before the zoning board, whereas, 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 whereas... Now therefore be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals makes the following findings in accordance with Section 267-B of the Town Law and Hyde Park Zoning Law, Section 108-33.6B2, regarding the requested variance. One, the requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be detriment to the nearby properties. The recognition of the long-existing access road to the property will not change the character of the neighborhood, which remains the same as it has been since 1980s. No changes are being undertaken on the property. The requested variance cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. There is no other possible access to the property except for the access provided by White Street. Three, the requested variance is substantially substantial, given the frontage requirement outlined in Section 108-4.4E of the zoning code. In this case, the frontage would be reduced from 25 to zero feet, since the access to a town road is via White Street, a private road. However, there is no significant change in the property or access to the property. Number four, the requested variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. While access to the property will remain on a private access road rather than a recognized town road, there will be no impact or change on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Number five, the requested variance is self-created. The property accessed via private road was created at the time the property was developed. It predates the existing access requirements. Be it further resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby grants the requested variance, subject to the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. It has been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, would you poll the board, please?
Yes, Mr. Agrewal.
Yes.
Mr. Bowen?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Donley?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman McNary?
Yes. Carried, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good luck on dealing with the pool and the permit for the pool. There's some tough people there.
I think now we also need to get a site plan.
We'll be calling up on that.
Thanks for all the pictures.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see if there is... Okay, we got that. Hold on, hold on, hold on. There's more coming. Okay. I'd like a motion to continue the public hearing on Camp Victory Lake, 21-15Z. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have we received... Madam Secretary, or have we received any further information from Camp Victory Lake?
Now, I spoke to Cynthia, the Planning Board Secretary, and they are following up, but there is no new information at this time.
Would it be prudent for us to move this... We have been moving this now for the last four or five months. To move it to January?
The Planning Board anticipates hearing from DPW on their next meeting.
And which is?
The 7th. You are the following week.
Okay.
They continued theirs to the 7th in hopes they would have something that they could refer to you then.
Okay, all right. Then I will... Let's see. I will ask for a motion to continue the public hearing to the December 17th meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay.
December 15.
I'm sorry, I beg your pardon. 15? Is it?
That's what it says.
Yes.
Okay. I believe you. All right. Good. All right. Now, let's move on. I'd like to entertain a motion to open a public meeting for Arietta, 609 Salt Point Turnpike.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay. Welcome, sir. Welcome back.
Hi.
How are you?
Great.
Good.
I'm a bit of a warm weather creature.
Oh, that's... Well, it's good you're not going into winters in Chicago, because this is weird getting it.
The package I'm handing out, I was able to sort of tweak the driveway.
Yes, thank you very much.
Music to our ears.
Oh, fantastic.
Down to... What was the number?
Right now, 20%.
20%. So we moved it... You have moved it from... It was 27%, I think, originally?
At the onset, yeah. The current is 30.1%. I had it down to 29.8, and then 23, and now 20.
That's fantastic. Very good. Okay. Other information? Nothing... Well, do we have more information on the... Did we... Do we have clarification on the generator?
Yes. The package I provided previous to this included an updated site plan, where I showed the 23% impervious, as well as the mandated setback for accessory structures, locations of the propane tank, the generator, and cooling system, as well as specs for all of that equipment, demonstrating that it falls well outside of the 12-foot-six required setback.
Good, excellent. Questions? Jim?
No.
Okay. Mr. Perkins?
We have this done by Christmas? If I get it okay today.
Next Christmas.
Counsel, may I? Question you have?
No questions.
Any insights?
No. Just two comments on the draft that has been prepared, that we would just make corrections in the sixth whereas clause to 20% and then number three, under therefore be it resolved, would also be down to 20%.
Yeah. Jim, you're gonna need to make... You got those two? So it's 23, and it's gone to 20? On... Repeat the two sections.
Sure, it's the sixth whereas clause, which you probably won't read, but we will have and will correct. And then number three on the second page.
You all set?
Number three. I heard number three was...
Yeah, okay. Good. All right. Other questions? Ms. Moss, anything from the village?
No.
Nothing? Okay. All right. I would... I would commend you for really coming back and looking at the pervious, and we really appreciate that. It does make a difference, and it makes, I think, everybody's life easier.
We were just talking about it before you came in, so perfect.
Well, we appreciate the opportunity. I think they're very excited about developing this property, so...
Yeah, we are, too. All right. I would then entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Mr. Agrewal, I believe you have a resolution?
Resolution to grant area variances. Jesse Arietta, 609 Salt Point Turnpike, Hyde Park, New York, 22538, dated today, Resolution 22-20Z. Whereas the applicant Jesse Arietta has submitted an application for three area variances related to the demolition and reconstruction of a single-family residence at property located at 609 Salt Point Turnpike, identified as tax parcel number 6263-02-851768 in the Greenbelt zoning district. And whereas the applicant authorized Chris Marta to represent her interest in the matter before the zoning board, and whereas the project is depicted on a sketch prepared by the applicant's representative, dated October 7th of this year, entitled "Arietta Residence 21-008". Whereas, 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 whereas... Whereas the applicable standards for considering area variances are set forth in Town Law Section 267-B and Hyde Park Zoning Law Section 108-33.6B2, which require the board to take into consideration the benefit for the applicant if the variances are granted as weighed against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the general neighborhood or community by such grant. Now therefore be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals makes the following findings in accordance with Section 267-B of the Town Law and Hyde Park Zoning Law Section 108-33.6B2, regarding the requested variances. One, the requested variances will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. The current residence is in a dilapidated state. The current house and garage are within the required setbacks. Reconfiguring and relocating the house and garage will be increased in the side in rare setbacks, although not to the extent required. Two, the benefits offered by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variances. Building within the setbacks would result in a home that is approximately 12-foot wide and 50-foot long. No other homes in this neighborhood are in this configuration. The home could be reconfigured and sited closer to the front yard setback, although the homes along that section of Salt Point Turnpike are set quite far back from the county road. Three, the requested variances are numerically substantial. The rear yard setback variance requested represents a 70% reduction from 50 to 15 feet. The side yard setback variance represents a 40% reduction from 25 to 15 feet, and the maximum pervious area coverage is changed from 15 to 20%. Four, the requested variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. The site is already developed, and the location of the well and septic will impact the location of the home. Five, the difficulties are self-created. The applicant purchased the house as is. Be it further resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby grants the requested variance, subject to the following conditions. One, pursuant to Section 108-33.5F1, the authorized activity must commence within one year from the date of issuance, otherwise it is revoked. Two, payment of all fees and escrow.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, would you poll the committee of the board?
Yes, Mr. Agrewal.
Yes.
Mr. Bowen?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Donley?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Chairman, David McNary.
Yes. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much.
We look forward to your project. Looks like an exciting one.
Yes.
Are you gonna do more in the village?
If the opportunity arises, yes, of course.
Hope so, hope so. Thank you very much, and thank you for, for, you know, working with us on that. It makes, makes a big difference.
No, absolutely, it was our pleasure.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
You, too. All right, we have one more bit of business before us. We have a resolution for the schedule for 19, for 19, for 2000, well, we can do that one, too, but for 2023, we'll start with 2023. Mr. Owen?
Need a motion?
Yes, this is a resolution setting regular meeting dates and application submission deadlines for calendar year 2023, dated today, Resolution 2022-B, Town of Hyde Park Zoning Board of Appeals, 2023 regular meeting dates. The meetings take place at 6:00 PM on the 4th Wednesday of each month, except for November and December. Submission deadlines are 15 days prior to the meeting. I'd like to have that submitted to the minutes, and we need to vote.
Second it?
Thank you.
Second, thank you. Madam Secretary, would you take, would you poll the board?
Says it's a voice vote?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Yes.
All not in favor? Opposed?
Yes, passed, all right, thank you.
Unanimous.
Is there any other business that we need to get before this committee? Counsel, is there any sage advice you would like to give us as we finish here?